Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Donna Savigny, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the October 7, 2020 Board Updates Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. This will be a hybrid meeting in which board members are present in the boardroom. However, some staff will be participating virtually. The Board of Education will take public comment related to tonight's agenda items through email or US mail. We will not be holding in-person citizen participation for this meeting. Comments received will be posted on the website. For staff who are participating in the virtual meeting, I would remind us all to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, Board members, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Board members, any comments or revisions? No, not hearing any. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move directly into Section 2, which is Reports and Discussion. And the first item up is the Health Department Updates, Metrics, and Leading Indicators. Dr. Lockhart, do you want to kick us off?
All right, so County Health Department Director Ed Singer is with us again this evening. As has been the past practice, we've been having some review of data and discussion with Mr. Singer. So thank you for joining us this evening, Ed.
Good evening, Dr. Lockhart and board members. Can, I think you're going to pull up the PowerPoint presentation from your end?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just go ahead to the next slide, please? Okay. How did we get? I'm looking at the, at the, there we go. I took out of the dashboard this week the, the numbers that I had given you before CDC and the state came out with guidance because I thought it was just confusing to have multiple different metrics that we were looking at that were looking at the same thing. So the CDC guidance is actually a little more liberal than what we started with. And I think, and I think just having that there on the dashboard is probably more useful. This, this week, actually, when we, we put this together yesterday, we had 59 cases last week. We had four that were late in being reported. So we're actually at 63 cases in Carroll County for the week of September the 27th. Our, our case rate per 100,000 last week was 5.1. And the positivity rate is calculated by the state in Carroll County is 1.97. The Hopkins rate is, has been going up. I know we said we wanted to look at this. It's kind of hard to compare it, though, because I don't have the local data. Generally, our positivity rate has been pretty much lower than the state average. So this, this number that we're looking at is a state number. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. The last thing I want to say about this slide before we move on is hospital usage. We hit a little bit of a bump, I guess, early this week. There's one day when we exceeded the ICU beds in the, in the hospital, which was last Saturday, which was the last day of the week. And we had a few days this week where, where we were up. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that when we get to that slide. So if I could go to the next slide, please.
Ed, before we move on, I just wanted to bring up something. One second, Ed, back on the, the previous slide.
Sure.
I just wanted to, something that I had brought up with Maggie when she was on the phone last week is the color coding for the, the state metrics, the governor's metrics, the fact that we have a red on the 7.5 and 6.3 and a yellow on the 5.1. I think that those are, those are, those color codings would be associated with, like, a full opening. But we're still in the green for the state for a hybrid opening, right? The hybrid is in, in between the, the 5 and the 15.
Yeah, and I have a really hard time interpreting exactly what that chart from the, the state, state means. And I actually, as I talked to you guys a couple of weeks ago when we talked about this, I really think we ought to be focusing kind of where we think we are with the, with the CDC metrics and, and whatnot. But I mean, it, the, the chart shows that somewhere between 5 and 15, and then it has these three different things you could potentially be doing. So I don't know exactly how to interpret that chart. I've kind of asked, I think it's really gray as the, as to what the guidance is there. I don't know if you all have an opinion on that. You can, you can certainly talk about it. But I have a really hard time interpreting exactly, you know, we got somewhere between 5 and 15, and you could do some of these things. But I'm not sure which of those things they're saying you should be doing based on, on that range.
Right, I guess I would say it certainly doesn't mean red, in my opinion, on, on those grids. Because, you know, hybrid is, is in that range of 5 to 15, and hybrid is what we're talking about. So I just, it's, it's a nit at this point. I just wanted to say that I think that, you know, we're definitely green on these for, for the state guidance for a hybrid opening.
Okay. Can I get that next slide, please? What I tried to show here is, this is our cases by week and where this would put us in the CDC guidance. And we, I was hoping we were seeing a trend when we reached that peak of 88 cases and things seemed to be trending downward. And, you know, I was really hoping I was going to be sitting here with you guys this week saying that we were in a moderate-risk category and that, you know, I'd be completely comfortable with things reopening. But, you know, we can't always be in our comfort zone. So obviously, our cases went up this week. We're on a trajectory where we've had 31 cases reported so far this week. And I think we're going to be probably at a similar number of cases next week, which would put us, you know, the low to mid-range of the greater risk of transmission according to the CDC guidance. So I guess I'd just say, if I knew when we would get to a moderate risk of transmission, I'd be sitting here telling you maybe we ought to wait for that. However, I don't have any way of telling you when we're going to get to that moderate risk of transmission, which would, which would really make me comfortable. It makes me less comfortable when we're, we're talking about higher risk of transmission in schools. But that doesn't mean that you all can't decide that to continue with your plan and go back. It just makes your decision a little bit more difficult because you have a tough decision now balancing the higher risk of transmission in schools versus your, your mission to educate the children in the Carroll County school system. And you all need to decide if this is, is an acceptable level of risk for you. And, you know, I will say that I think you need to realize that we're going to see more cases with, if, if we have more cases in the community, we're going to see more cases in the school. And there's going to be more quarantines and more isolations based on that. But whatever decision you make, the Carroll County Health Department's going to support you as best we can in doing the contact tracing and, and dealing with this as schools eventually reopen.
Ed, can, can you just kind of reiterate exactly how the contact tracing is going to work real quick?
Well, we're working very closely with the school staff. And what we're asking the school system to do is, is to help us to identify people who have been in close contact with somebody who's identified as a, as what we call a PUI, somebody who's, who has COVID-like symptoms or, or someone who's confirmed to have had COVID in the classrooms, on the buses, and that type of things. And they're going to, the school system personnel are going to help us sort out who those folks are. And the contact tracing, essentially what we'd be doing is anybody who's had close contact for closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes with somebody who's suspected or confirmed to have had COVID is going to be asked to quarantine for a 14-day period after their last close contact with that person. Does that answer your question?
And that's, that includes even with masks on, correct?
Yes, it's, it's, having masks on is a risk reduction measure, but it doesn't change the CDC definition of close contact.
So they still do contact tracing even with symptoms?
Yes. Now, we, we've had discussion about this. And we, we had a whole thing we laid out for you before that talked about, I think Carl talked through it, Carl Streeker, I believe, talked through it, about how, what those symptoms are. And there was a whole flow chart that you went over a few weeks ago. I don't know if you, if you guys want to rehash that whole thing here, we can. But we discussed this at a previous board meeting exactly how that would work.
Right, I don't think we need to rehash that. I think Mr. Streeker did a really nice job of kind of walking us through. And I think it actually answered a lot of questions in the community. That was a very helpful to kind of have it in a flow chart format.
And you're doing it per the guidelines.
Right. So if I can get the next slide. This is just the community cases by week report that I've been sharing with you on a regular basis. Next slide, please. This is also something that we were asked to share with you as a board. These are probable cases that we've seen on a, on a weekly basis. That these are rapid tests that are not being counted by the, by the state or the local health department as confirmed cases. But these are people who had symptoms and tested positive with a rapid test, but it's not a PCR test that's, that's as reliable. But generally speaking, these, these rapid tests are reliable for identifying people who have COVID that are symptomatic but are less reliable in ruling out COVID. So it's just information that we wanted to share that was asked for. These are, these are tests that are not counted in our case count. Get the next slide, please. This is just the 14-day rolling average that we've been sharing on a regular basis. Next slide. This is our COVID-19 deaths by week. And, you know, I will say, this is a really positive thing from, from my perspective. We haven't had a community death related to COVID since August. So I mean, if, if nothing else, I can't say for sure whether it's we know how to deal with this better and we're figuring out how to better mitigate the disease once somebody has it and, and treat the disease. But we haven't seen a, a community-related COVID death since August. Next slide, please. This is what I mentioned, that we had seen an uptick a little bit in the hospital. And I talked to Garrett about it. We had four days where we were slightly above the use of 10 ICU beds. And it started on Saturday and ended on Tuesday. They're back below 10 now. And Garrett said they did see a slight uptick in, in COVID-related cases and PUIs in the hospital. However, he didn't think that it was a huge deal. And he didn't really think that this should influence your decision about going back to, back to school as you guys had planned.
And Ed, just to, just to clarify, so these are not COVID-related hospitalizations, right? Because we, we were tracking that on our dashboard. There was only one hospitalization back in August and, and one last week, right? So those are the only COVID-
COVID-related hospitalizations, I, I know there were, no, there's, there are quite a number more. I mean, whether we're talking in the ICU or just hospitalizations in general, I know just, for instance, today, I think they had somewhere in the neighborhood of, and I don't have the numbers right here in front of me. Garrett sent me a text. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 or 12 people that were under investigation for COVID and, and I think six confirmed positives that were in the hospital. Now, none of those were on vents. And, and I think there was only one that was in an ICU, in an ICU bed. So this is, it's, we, we have had hospitalizations, but the, the hospitalizations have been significantly down. There are anywhere from a handful to a couple of dozen folks that are either under investigation for, for COVID or, or hospitalized for confirmed COVID on any given day at the hospital. But we don't feel that this is putting a strain on the hospital's resources at this point. So you can go to the next slide, please. I think this is just that age breakdown that we've been sharing. And before I move on to questions from you all, I just want to, want to say, I think, you know, you guys have got a, a tough balancing act to do here. We're, we're in a, in an area where we think there's a, a higher level of, of risk of transmission in schools. But, and we're, we're going to expect to see cases. And we're, we're, your, your school systems put in a whole bunch of mitigation factors. We, we went out, and I actually went out with a PA from the Health Department and one of my environmental health folks. And we went to several of the schools. And we're going to have written comments to the, to your staff in the next day or so. But we looked at some things, we made some suggestions. And, you know, when you look at the CDC guidelines, they talk about the, the different factors that we're trying to put into place to mitigate, to mitigate COVID-19. And we've got, all those factors have been considered and put into place as best we can. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a matter of balancing whether you, you feel like the level of risk with the, with the level of transmission in the community is, is low enough that you're comfortable with, with reopening schools in this hybrid manner. And the only thing that I'll say to you is, this does put me a little bit out of my comfort zone. We go back on the 19th because of where we are with community cases. But we can't always all be in our comfort zone. I don't know when we would get to a, a moderate level of risk. And the one thing that I'd urge you, though, is, is I'm concerned about the strain this is going to put on your staff and my staff with the contact tracing and trying to manage this as we reopen schools if you guys decide to go forward with the 19th. And I'd really ask you to consider putting off sports at least a few weeks so that we can kind of figure out how we're going to manage having people back in the classroom, manage cases, manage quarantines, manage isolations, and figure out what that's all going to look like and try to get in a rhythm of how this is going to operate when schools are open before we try to open up, before we try to open up sports and other things and have, have those to manage as well. I know it's going to put a fair, fair amount of stress on our contact tracers who are really doing a, a difficult job because a lot of the people in the community don't want to necessarily tell them the truth about who they want, who they've been in contact with or, or don't want to tell who they've been in contact with because the person might be upset with them because they're going to be in quarantine. But the whole purpose of all this contact tracing is to keep people who are sick and people who are potentially going to become sick because they've been in close contact from infecting other people. And it's, it's just really important for us to know that if we do an effective job of contact tracing and we try to, we try to mitigate the risk there, that we're going to be more successful in keeping schools open. And the better job we can do at that in helping you all, the more successful we're going to be in keeping schools open when you reopen. So I just, again, think that we, we probably need to take this at least a step at a time. And would, would urge you to kind of, if we're going to look at reopening schools on the 19th, to at least give us a few weeks to try to see how this looks. I, I, like I said, I'm not completely comfortable with where we are with the numbers, but I don't know that we're ever going to get to a place where I'd be completely comfortable at this point because there, there doesn't seem to be a clear trend that I could tell you in three weeks, we're going to be at a spot where we're going to be moderate risk of transmission. So that's kind of where I am on things. And I'd be glad to have any discussion you all would like to have. And you can just go ahead and take the slideshow down at this point.
And Ed, thanks for all those comments. I think that we want to keep the, the sports conversation separate. I think we'd like to kind of get through the, the hybrid discussion and, and see where we are with that. And then say, because I think we all said at the last meeting that academics had to be the top priority, and we make the decision on that basis. And then we can kind of talk about what we're going to do with sports after that fact, right? So I think we definitely had consensus on that last time. So I'd like to just kind of address this and just say, Ed, I appreciate your, your continued support and the reporting of the numbers and giving us your perspective because it's very important as we, as we make these decisions. And I think since the beginning, you've said, you know, it's very difficult to just look at one number, right? Which is why, which is why we developed the dashboard, right? Trying to look at the, the bigger picture and where things are headed. And I, there are a lot of, a lot of very positives right now. So the positivity rate is good, the hospitalizations and the death rates are very good. We're in the green from a state guidance perspective. I know that we're, we're in the orange with the CDC, but it's, it's coming down. So, so I think when we're looking at the, the overall picture, there's a lot of positives. Like you said, we're not, we're not necessarily where we're all very comfortable yet. But it, you know, there's never a situation where you're going to have zero risk, right? And, and so when you look at the, the big picture, I think we're, we're in a reasonable spot. I guess I'm not seeing anything that, I mean, we've already, we already had taken the vote to, to open on October 19th. And I'm not seeing anything that would change my opinion on that. I think that you've done a great job with, you know, setting the expectations for contact tracing. We have to make the community very aware of, of exactly how we're going to go about doing that. We need to push that the community needs to do the right things, right? Like, if we're going to open up schools, we need to do the right things. You have to be honest in the contact tracing process. You need to wear your masks. You need to socially distance. You need to wash your hands. You need to do all this good protocol. You know, kids don't, don't have large gatherings, you know, after school. Just, we need to do the right things because the academics are the, the most important piece.
And I think, and thanks for what you also did in the schools, looking through their. It's, I know earlier, maybe three meetings ago, one of your charts had the mitigation things you do. And, and like you said, we, we want to do all of them. And, and again, I've said this other meetings, a lot of counties aren't blessed with a health department like we have, commissioners like we have, a sheriff's department. It's a lot of people here that work together to make this stuff happen. And I'm amazed at the amount of time you have to be part of these meetings.
Right.
Ed, I have a question for you. It's Commissioner Frazier. I don't know how it's coming across. But you said you've walked some of the schools, your health department or health officers walked some of the schools and given us some guidance about how to help mitigate this. All this, I mean, I've been in a lot of different schools. The buildings are not, no two buildings seem to be the same. Is there any plan to walk every single building before schools open up soon? So the administrators can know, have a better idea what to do, or they're doing it right, or whatever? Or that's just not in the plans?
So Commissioner, we, we made a, an effort to make sure we had a high school, a middle school, and an elementary school that the school system thought was most representative. I could tell you, my staff and I are pretty stressed right now. And I think, you know, we wanted to give recommendations to the school system on, on things that we saw there that they could implement throughout system-wide. And I'm sure that the, the school system staff are going to be in each one of these buildings taking a look at all of that. We just, we just don't have the staff and the time to be able to, to go out and visit every one of these schools.
All right, and I appreciate that. And I want to say, if the school system staff is going to do that, they should do it pretty quickly because the schools have things set up right now. Because I, I just want to get to this later. But I've visited several schools between last meeting and this meeting, taught teachers, administrators, nurses, and building supervisors. And I want to talk about that more later. But if you're going to do something like that, our school staff or whoever, get it done. So these people can, the administrators can know what they need to do to mitigate these problems. Like I said, the buildings are different. The ones I, they're, they're, they might be similar, but they're not the same. They're different. So if the school system is going to do that, do it quickly. So, so things can happen quickly. That's just a recommendation.
And I'll even say this, Commissioner. Every one of these classrooms is different because we walked through different classrooms at, at South Carroll and, and North Carroll Middle and, and at the Sandy Mountain Elementary School. And, and each classroom's a little bit different. And I think the, the school system has a good understanding of what we're trying to do is to, to keep students as, as separated as far apart as we possibly can so that as few students as possible have close contact with other students. And, and there's some things we talked about as we walked through the schools that I think we, we had some back and forth and made some good suggestions. So hopefully, we'll get all that implemented before the buildings open.
So students are most apprehensive about the harmful effects some of these things, like these logistical concerns could have on their learning. So as Mr. Singer said, like, this would put a strain on school staff and administration. And we're already strained. And this might be discussion for later on in hybrid. But with the 300 teachers and some, we might need to staff some rooms differently. So I'm just a bit concerned. And many students have reached out to me and saying that they're very concerned about how their learning will be potentially harmed due to this.
And I think that's a valid question, Devanchi. I, I think that part of the, the overarching solution is that there is flexibility, right? If students don't want to come into the buildings to be in person, they have that option of staying virtual. And the staffing challenges have, have definitely, it definitely is a challenge, right? But we're working through it. We've got all hands on deck. We're giving administrators the flexibility to work through those issues. And, and we've got plans in place. And things are all headed in the right direction. But we certainly are concerned as well, right? We want to make sure that, what is the, the phrase that you've used, Dr. Lockhart? Is the instructional integrity. We want to make sure that, that we've got it covered, right? And, and there's a lot of effort going on behind the scenes to, to make that happen with our administrators.
Well, I have to say, since I, like I said, I've visited several schools here. If you have the plans in place, I don't think the schools know about them. They're not up to date on what needs to be done. One thing I was told by every school I went to is that plans change from week to week, sometimes day to day. They're not sure what they're supposed to be doing. I, I was at a school, and I'm not going to mention schools, I don't want to go there. But they had signs up, it laminated signs about what to do. And one administrator came down, tore them down because they're no longer applicable because of something else that was, has been changed. What they're asking for, if you're going to open up, concrete set of directions from the central office and board of ed about what they're going to do, keep them in place so they can set this all up. And when school, and kids finally come back to the schools, then have flexibility of what they need to, then they, sorry. I had some dental work, it's hard to talk right now. Has some flexibility for the administrators at the buildings to do what they need to do to mitigate problems as they see them arise. Because all buildings, they're, they're not the same. They're, they're different. And that, that's what they're asking for. But if you have a plan, the teachers, they want to know what their plan is. I was, I was told time and time and time again, they're not sure what's going on. They're not sure. So everyone needs to be on the same page. Teachers need to know what's going on.
So if I could, Commissioner Frazier, just to address a couple of things. First of all, you know, Mr. Singer, I, I do share your views on, on some of these metrics, which concern me. But I also recognize that the board's interested in moving forward with the hybrid. Secondly, as far as the plans go, we've been working on these plans since June in earnest in terms of protocols and procedures. And you're right, guidance does change, sometimes weekly. And so we're trying to respond to that. If you recall, our teachers haven't been in yet in terms of back formally, officially into school. To get that official, let's walk through the building as a, as a, as a team or as a staff, that, that happens next week in, in the process. And so we do have plans for that. Our teams have been out, other than, you know, Mr. Singer and his, his folks did a great job of supporting us as it relates to conditions in our building and things maybe we, you know, need to consider for different nuances around different places in the building, which, you're right, they all look a little bit different. But I know our principals have been hard at work. And that's evidenced by the small groups that we have happening in our schools right now. And I know our operations teams have also been hard at work getting out to each of those buildings and providing that support. I looked at Mr. O'Neill or, or Ms. McCabe. If there's anything additional you'd like to add.
Dr. Lockhart, can you say one more thing, please? How many students are in Career Tech? I've been through that school. I've been through a couple of schools. I was impressed. Now, I talked to administrators because, like you say, teachers haven't been in there. I was fairly impressed with the level of what they're doing. How many kids are in CCT? And I was impressed there.
Angie or, or Bill, if you're on, do you remember the exact number? It's several hundred, I believe.
I think it, Dr. Lockhart, when I was there, I think they said 400. Close to 400. And Gateways opened too.
That's correct, Ms. Herbert.
That's correct, Ms. Herbert. We're, we're, you know, this, this week, we started our, our next phase, so we're looking around 400 plus students.
So I, I do actually want to, I want to say thank you to all the administrators who have been putting in a ton of work this past week to really work through all of the, the staffing model concerns. And, and we're on, I think, a very good path, but I just, I, I want to thank them for all the effort that's going into this. I know it's been a lot of work and we've been asking a lot of you, and, and you guys have really been coming through. And, and I can't thank you enough for all the effort that's being put into this.
And Davanchi, if I could, you know, you raise a great point, right? My, my conversation all along has been about making sure that we deliver on instruction. And I know anytime a change is being considered and we're leaving something, just like when we decided to start all virtually, I was concerned about instruction. I'm equally concerned about safety. And so I want to make sure that we do everything we can to protect the instructional integrity of, of our programming. And I know that that's, that's a challenge anytime we're talking about making a shift to something. So I appreciate that concern from students, and I appreciate you sharing that this evening.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that concern as well. I mean, we're, we're doing a lot of work, our administrators are doing a lot of work to make sure that that instructional integrity is there. And, and I think we're, we're, you know, it's important to note that I think we are poised to open, and the state superintendent supports it. She was here yesterday, was very impressed by all of our efforts, and, and she definitely supports the path that we're on. We do understand that we're asking a lot from our administrators, our, our staff and our educators, and, and they are really coming through. I mean, this is going to be one of the biggest challenges that we ever face as a school system. But the, our staff and our educators and our administrators, they are really coming through. And we're doing everything that we can to do this in a safe manner, right? We, we've implemented all the safety protocol, there, there's so much effort going on behind the scenes with that. And, but from a logistical standpoint, it's going to be a little messy, right? For the, for, for a little while while we're in hybrid, just because this is new and it's different. But it's so important to make progress, and we, we can't let, we can't let perfection get in the way of progress. And, and we are going to be making progress to getting the kids back in person, which is, I think, what we, it's the next step that we need to take.
And I think, I, I've been very impressed with what the school system's done. I, in the last week, I've probably been in half a dozen office buildings, more than at job sites, I've been in factories. The level of what I see this school system doing doesn't happen in the business world right now. It's, you don't see, you see hand sanitizer, you see some doors locked open, you see a few things, but you do not see the level that they're going to, to try to protect everyone in these buildings. And frankly, I, I'm impressed by it. I, I wish some of the businesses maybe did a little more, but they haven't, and most of them have been open since March and, and successful at it. So I, I have a comfort level with, with, again, the cooperation between the health department and the school system. I think you guys talk multiple times a day. And, and, and like Dr. Lockard said, some of the guidance, I mean, you see on a national level, something on the website, it gets erased, then it comes back, and then they say, well, that rarely happens. And it's hard to follow all that guidance. And I think, like Ms. Sevigney said, we, we almost, and I appreciate it, the staff, the teachers, the, the administrators, they want perfection. That's their goal. But, but we've got to do the best we can, and I, I think they're doing a great job.
I, I've actually been really inspired by, by all the work that's, that's going on. I couldn't be more impressed. Folks are really rising to the challenge, and, and I can't thank folks enough. And, you know, whether you're a teacher who's going to be teaching virtually or in person, or whether you're a student who's going to be learning in person or learning virtually, or if your parents supporting your kids in whatever platform they're in, virtual or in person, you, you're such an important part of our community, and, and we are going to support you. And, and the school system is just really rising to the challenge. I, I'm just, I've been impressed and inspired, and I can't thank everyone enough.
Just a, a couple of things, if I can, because I, like I said, I've been around a few schools, talked to many teachers. First thing I have to say, teachers are doing a great job. You're absolutely right. And they're all telling me that they're working 12 to 14 hours a day during school days, and six to eight hours a day during the weekends, just to get this done. I'm not exaggerating when I say two teachers are actually crying, they had tears come out of their eyes when they're talking about what they're trying to do for these students. So they're very, very committed to, to helping out the students. But I'll also say that when you're talking about the integrity of the educational system, the teachers that were talking to me said that when you go to hybrid, you can't expect it to be good as what the virtual's doing right now. Because you're going to have a teacher with a virtual class with her computer, his or her computer, and number of students out in the, in the classroom at the same time. The tension, their attention will be divided, they won't be, this, and then they said, even the virtual, if you're, because a lot of parents, some parents, I guess, are thinking about keeping their students homes because virtual's working very well. What I'm being told by these teachers, virtual won't be as good as it is right now, because it can't be. Because they're divided between the students that are in the classroom and the students that are on the computer, and it's two different things. And it's, and I'm sure things will get worked out. I'm sure it'll be good because they're, they're doing the best that they can, but they're already working 12 to 14 hours a day to do this right now. And now you're putting this on top of them as well.
But Commissioner Frazier, let, let, let me, let-
If I can, you'll get in second here, Donna. You know, it's going to be a, a period of breaking in and adjustment. They're, they just feel overwhelmed. I just put, leave it at that, and then you can talk. Thank you.
And Commissioner Frazier, we, we, we hear what you're saying, and we've heard that from the community as well. And Dr. Lockard, maybe you can address, or maybe Mr. Anderson can address that we, we under, we've heard that, that concern from our teaching community. And we've been making great strides in terms of providing information and direction to our teachers of how best to accomplish this.
Yeah, I, I can start, and then certainly Jason and his team can, can finish that. As we've said all along, anytime we're making a, a switch, there's going to be adjustments and there's going to be challenges. And Commissioner Frazier, I agree 100%. Our teachers are working incredibly hard, and they're doing amazing things. And if you think about how we started to where we've come, it's incredible. And we owe that to a, a lot of innovative, creative, hardworking, giving tons of time teachers and staff in this system. I think we can use that to our advantage moving forward. As was evidenced just yesterday, walking through the Career and Technology Center, as was evidenced recently, earlier this week when I walked through Gateway Crossroads, as was evidenced when I've walked through some of our specialized programs. And I'm not saying, I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's a piece of cake. But I have seen teachers utilizing the technology, much in the same way that they have been to be able to meet the needs of the students that are there in their class with students following along, and interacting with those students. Again, I'm not naive enough to think that that's just going to be a piece of cake on day one. We have put a lot of supports in place, a lot of training in place, a lot of opportunity, I believe, to help people perfect that. And we're not looking for perfection, but to their comfort level and to what works for them. In some classes, it was, I saw yesterday, small groups of students working with other small virtual groups of students. And then the teacher would call them back virtually at another time in the class to all meet together. I saw students on a screen that the teacher could walk the room and talk to, while she could also talk to students in her classroom. I've seen a lot of different ways folks have used that. And just like we did with virtual instruction, we gave a lot of best practice and a lot of ideas and a lot of considerations, and our teachers ran with it, and they made it work. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, Dr. Lockard, as Commissioner Frazier said, it's going to be incredibly difficult. There's no doubt about it. But I will say, as Dr. Lockard just said, when we started down the road of, of virtual learning, we all were facing uncertain times. And, you know, our staff is, is, is some of the best staff in the entire state. And that's evidenced by our, by the programming that has been put in place. The enhanced virtual learning, although not ideal, I can attest by speaking to other colleagues, that our school system's doing exceptionally well because of the outstanding teachers we have and the assistance that we have, and our administrators, quite honestly, of leading that charge. I do have this evening Jeff Alisakis and Kelly Hammond, who, who have led the charge on this and building the capacity. We, we've spent some time over the past couple of weeks, providing technical solutions of what this looks like, providing training to our administration so they can speak intelligently to, to the current challenges and obstacles that we will face, and our students and families will face, as well as continuing to provide resources for our teachers that we recently availed Monday morning. I think, Dr. Lockard, you've said it well. This is going to be difficult. It's going to be not clean at first, but I think that I'm confident in saying, as, as many of you toured a couple of buildings just yesterday, you saw this organically take place. You saw teachers working with kids in a room, as well as communicating with students and their families at home at the same time. I didn't know if, if Ms. Hammond or Mr. Alisakis wanted to speak specifically to some of the feedback that they've received in the work that they've put in place. Kelly or Jeff?
Sure. Good evening, board members. We have been spending the last week going out and sharing not only the slide deck that teachers have available to them and administrators have on transitioning to the hybrid instructional environment, but we've been going out and doing some regional workshops with building administrators, with media specialists, with media clerks. Today, we worked with tech services and building techs, as well as members of curriculum and instruction. And we're really walking through that technical solution. And I can say that from my experience, the sense of relief that our administrators have once they have seen, once they've experienced all of the flexibility and the autonomy that teachers are going to have, I think they're feeling far more comfortable with how we can leverage the technology that we currently have in the system, that teachers are already using with the enhanced virtual learning, and how they're going to be able to adapt that to a hybrid learning environment. We've really partnered with our school media specialists. They've been integral for all of this to happen. They've kind of been our first line of defense in answering teachers' questions, and then in turn, us supporting them. We wanted to make sure that there was building capacity when teachers start to return, and they start to set up their classrooms for this new learning environment. We know it's going to be challenging. We know that it is an entirely new learning environment, but there are opportunities. And we have heard that having that autonomy and having that flexibility, that administrators and teachers and media specialists are feeling far more comfortable with the concept of what it's going to look like.
Right. And Ms. Hammond, I mean, even if, you know, even if we were out in January timeframe, there's still going to be students that are going to have underlying health issues that are going to want to stay virtual for a good chunk of the year. So this is a point that we're going to have to get to at some point during the year, right? So the, the, the need for that isn't going away.
And that's accurate, President Sevigney. And Jeff, can you speak specifically to the work that you just did and, and shared with, with our teachers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Anderson. And hello, board members, Superintendent Lockard and Commissioner Frazier. The work that my team did, the professional learning team, was complimentary to the work that the IT team did, the instructional technology team that Kelly just spoke of. And what our team sort of did was, we went out and we painted a picture for teachers. Teachers right now have this canvas, and it's full of lots of colors. And what we tried to do was, was take those colors and create an image for what the hybrid learning environment could look like. So we created a Google site that, that teachers all have access to, and it shows various setups. So now teachers have a visual so that when they go into their classroom, they can set up their classroom, and as, as Ms. Hammond spoke about, they have the autonomy to set that up based upon their teaching style, their learners' needs, and then the physical layout of the room. So we've sort of set it up so that it gives them this picture. And again, the key, the key, key, key thing we kept stressing with them is, you have the autonomy. Personalize this to make it your hybrid teaching zone. There's no one way that, that, that is correct. So that's what we put together, and honestly, the feedback, I know that was one of the questions that we've been receiving, is overwhelmingly positive. Because again, it gives teachers that visual. It complements the technical side that Kelly and her team put together, and makes it applicable to them in their classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Alisakis. And, and board members, if you'd like to have a link to that site, we'd be happy to send that to you as well, so you can take a look at that. But Dr. Lockard?
Thank you.
And, and I'd just, I'd like to say a couple of things. I think, and this has been very emotional for a lot of people and, and tough, and, and a lot of hard work. I think we've tried to say, back since the springtime, we're the best system in the state, we have the best teachers and educators in the state. And if anything, several of the school systems required teachers to be in the classroom. Back in August, we said, we're not going to do that. We're going to give flexibility. They can teach from home or from there. We said, they need to be in the, in the buildings October 5th. As it got closer to October 5th, we collectively said, we're going to be flexible about that too. That's up to the administrators, that's up to Dr. Lockard, how they work that out and transition them. I hope we didn't hurt the transition by being, being flexible, but I think, I think our educators, I think our staff deserve that flexibility and, and hopefully handle it well. But, but I, I don't think there's any doubt that we don't, we don't value the educators we have. And, and, and I think, like was mentioned, any transition's hard at any time. And one, one last thing I'd like to say, and probably Dr. Lockard's going to throw something at me. We get a time machine, go back to November and December, and some of the thoughts and plans we had for what this county was going to do, and then we got hit by this. It, it, it's been traumatic for everybody, and, and I hope we never see it again. But I think, I think we've got the people to get through it.
And again-
I just have, if I could, just one comment, and then I'll be quiet. I know, I'd be happy about that. If, if, and everyone is saying we've had the best teachers, we had the best, then listen to them. When they have questions, respond to their questions. When they have concerns, respond to their concerns. If we have the best, and I think we do, listen to what they're saying. That's all, and I'll, and I'll stop right there. Because that, I can tell you right now, from the schools I've visited and the teachers that, teachers that have talked frankly with me, or sent me texts or email, they don't think that they are being listened to. If they are, and it's good to sit here and say we're, that we had the best teachers, we had the best this, we had the best that, then listen to them. And then they will feel that you actually do consider them the best.
And Commissioner Frazier, I couldn't agree with you more. And I, I think that we are listening to them, and that's why we've got staff kind of trying to put as many supports in place as possible.
And again, the rubber meets the road at the school level, as we're saying. And again, you know, we certainly, certainly listen as the board, and it's really our school administrators who are listening and who are, are acting on the feedback of their staff members. I can speak concerning one of my ambassador schools. As far as their chat and chew sessions, I mean, they're just very specific on how the hybrid model is going to look in their particular school. Again, the principal and assistant principal are sharing that teachers will have the flexibility and the autonomy to set up their classrooms to suit their instructional program and, and their style of teaching, so to speak. I think at first, when we heard about the hybrid model and having to teach in-person students and virtual students at the same time, and how you'd be locked to just sitting right in front of your computer and right in one area, you know, it gave a, a different kind of view as to what I'm hearing now. I mean, there's like a range of really movement and styles that can really go along with the content that's being taught and the teacher's comfort level and the teacher's teaching style, as well as the children's learning style. So again, it, it sounds like it's going to look different now from what we were thinking at the beginning. I don't think it's going to be as, you know, as strict, so to speak, but there is that flexibility and that autonomy. And I guess if there's nothing else that this whole situation has taught any of us, I think, you know, we've all come away thinking that, you know, flexibility is really the key to making all of this work. Because there's just no, no hard answer, no hard way that, you know- know, we can expect folks to follow, to get the program to work. But again, you know, we just leave it up to the instructional decision-making of our staff members. We have faith, we have confidence in their ability to plan their programs and to really, you know, live up to the integrity of the curriculum and of the program for our students. So as has been said, you know, it might be a few, you know, hiccups that we have along the way, but I think we're going to be able to certainly move forward and to grow from those. So again, flexibility certainly has been key. And I was just really impressed with being a part of a chat and chew, and I'll name the school. It was Northwest Middle. But again, the administrators did a wonderful job just sharing what the hybrid model is going to look like in their school and just hearing how it's going to play out. Again, it was really eye-opening for me, even though I'm looking at the what, I'm looking at it from a different level. But once you look at it at the school level, that's really where the rubber meets the road. And I think that's where the instruction is really taking place.
Well said, Dr. Dorsey. Thank you. So, Dr. Lockard, with that, did we want to move on to the hybrid updates section? I know you had a bunch of points that you wanted to make.
Sure. Yes, thank you. First, let me thank Mr. Singer again. Like I said, he and his team came out and gave us some really good feedback to our schools, and we're constantly making adjustments, and we appreciate his ongoing input along with his team, and we know how busy he is. I was very pleased that our state superintendent, Dr. Karen Salmon, had the opportunity to visit our system yesterday. She got to see great things happening for students in person. And I also shared with her the incredible work that's been happening virtually across our system as well. But she visited in-person programs at our Career and Technical Center as well as a specialized program setting at Shiloh Middle School. Can't tell you how appreciative we are of staff and leaders of those buildings and programs that we visited for getting that hybrid model in place and making things happen for our students. And again, I want to take the opportunity to thank our teachers and staff who have been working tirelessly with great innovation and creativity in delivering virtual instruction to all of our students. As everyone can imagine, I continue to receive incredible amounts of feedback regarding every possible scenario, implication, course of action, and concern associated with our return-to-school plans. Not a day goes by where I don't consider our students and employees' safety, well-being, mental health, and academic progress. Like Mr. Singer, and I reiterated this early, I do remain concerned about the metrics that have been shared. However, the board has been clear that the system will be moving to the hybrid model on October 19th. As we've planned for all along, parents will continue to have the choice to have students participate in the hybrid model or remain all virtual. We also recognize the associated challenges with staffing as we transition to the hybrid model. We have brought these challenges and other challenges publicly to this board and have outlined them in our planning that's been nonstop since early June. We'll continue to work creatively, flexibly, and in response to whatever challenges we face. I want to take a moment to thank our school-based administrators, teams of teachers in our buildings, and our central staff who have been working around the clock for months upon months to overcome so many of the associated challenges. Just like when we started virtual learning, it won't be perfect. It won't be without its challenges, and nothing will ever come close to replicating our traditional model, face-to-face learning for all students. I say this to state the obvious. I say it to manage expectations. Some classes will still have virtual teachers. Some students may have adjusted schedules, and some may even have different teachers depending on individual circumstances at individual schools. Our principals and staff will work to maintain the integrity of the instructional programs to the best of their ability and do have the autonomy to make the best decisions possible for their schools, their students, and their staff, with always the expectation that safety protocols are adhered to. As you heard earlier this evening, we always remain in close contact with our county health department. They've reviewed our plans. They've toured some of our schools and provided us feedback and support as we continue to keep everyone's safety and well-being as a priority. We'll continue to do all we can to keep students and staff safe so they can participate in in-person learning should they choose to. When we must close a classroom or a school due to COVID concerns or related quarantines according to our safety protocols and sometimes revert temporarily to virtually instruction, we will do that. Again, we'll continue to ask for patience, flexibility, and understanding during this transition. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. McCabe to provide a few highlights of that transition time.
Thank you, Doc. We've been, as a school system, administrators, all of our support staff, we have been communicating with our families about transition from 100% virtual to a hybrid learning environment. That has been going on in lots of different ways. Administrators have been sending out videos, slide decks, other presentations, as well as holding virtual meetings that students and parents have been able to attend. They've been able to get the information that administrators have been putting out as well as asking really good questions that they have about what things will look like. So far, parents and students have gotten information on which cohort they are in or if they are assigned to virtual learning. As we've said in the past, that can be changed at any point. A student can go from virtual to in-person or from in-person to virtual. Parents just need to contact the school in order to do that. The schools have worked really hard to put students into cohorts that will work academically for our students, and they've given students their school schedules, notified them of any changes that would be happening for scheduling during the hybrid model. And parents can expect to continue to have that kind of information as we move forward into the hybrid model. Any scheduling changes or staffing changes will come directly from the school itself, and any changes in procedures in the building will also be communicated. We've been working very hard to have signage on our buildings, have signage throughout the schools to help students safely maneuver around the buildings. Our staff has been putting up plexiglass in our schools to help mitigate some of that risk. So there's been lots going on in our schools, and I know that a lot of those videos and presentations that have gone out to parents have shown the inside of the schools and what that looks like, what the cafeteria looks like now so that we can socially distance, what classrooms look like now. You know, some of it looks very different than what students and parents remembered from last school year, the last time they were in school. So it's really important for everyone to know what to expect. So, as I said, those are the things that we've been talking about with our communities, and we will keep talking about that as we move forward in hybrid.
Any additional feedback or questions from the board?
I have been in schools, and they are working diligently. They really are.
And I appreciate both of your words and what you're saying for those, if there are people watching, the communication is going to come from their school, and they already have a lot of information. A lot of them have bus schedules, a lot of them, everything's moving forward. And I know, again, talking to families, they tell me in the things like Dr. Dorsey talked about, they heard the excitement. And it's hard, but I think it's a good step and it's an exciting step. And when you think that these students haven't been in the school building for how many months, this is a transition that has to happen, and I think everybody said, you know, it's hard to pick the date, it's perfect to do it, and it won't be perfection, but with this group, it's going to be close. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think it's very important for us and as a community to also keep relaying positivity. We did see, you know, some emails, there was a lot of pushback, you know, when we had to go to virtual in the spring and it's not going to work. And we made it work. And then in the fall, how difficult it was going to be, and we made it work. So it is the constant, just it's going to work. We're going to work it out. There are going to be hiccups, and we will work it out from there. I think that is very important for all of us to do, for parents to do, and support your neighbor and others in your community, no matter their decision. That is important as well. This is a difficult time. COVID is a difficult situation, but there has to be positivity in that and communicating just to keep morale going and to keep spirits up. And I know it's hard, but that's also what we need to do in order to move forward.
And I think communication is really going to be key. There's going to be, as you pointed out, Dr. Lockard, there's going to be regular communication to the communities from their individual schools on a regular basis as we work through the issues.
Patient, I can't emphasize enough, understanding flexibility. And I laid out what some of those things mean in terms of potential changes or, you know, we're going to be constantly in communication with our health department, so we want to be responsive when there are issues or concerns that come up that we weren't anticipating so we can be flexible and support our system's needs.
Flexibility is absolutely key, and we're not expecting perfection. We just need progress. You know, we have 70% of the families saying that their kids need to be in the school because they're struggling with learning. And I think that this is a big positive step in the right direction.
And also, the governor has put us in the beginning of Phase 3, so it is important to start moving in the directions of where he is going as well. You know, that's something that we have said right from the beginning, depending upon wherever the governor goes, fall within that line in some way. And I think that's important to acknowledge as well.
Okay, so, board members, any other comments or questions on that? Or we can move on to the sports discussion?
Okay, so with that, I know we had had conversation at the last meeting as it related to options for fall sports. I believe the suggestion was to come back with any updates there, any continued conversations. So I'll turn it back over to the board. We have staff standing by, ready for answers or inquiries. I know we were focused on the academic program, and I, you know, I think that's, to Mr. Singer's advice, I think that personally, that's a good place to be. But I know the board wanted to have this conversation, so I'll turn it to board members for questions, follow-up. We have staff available to respond.
I'll go. Good evening, Mr. Duffy. I have a couple of questions. I understand we need to get schools started first, but of course, I want sports second and/or any of those extracurricular activities. I've talked to various football coaches in the county. I have called and talked to athletic directors. I've talked to other coaches, and I looked at both sets of their options. I see two things in the second semester. Number one, I don't think it's fair if they are able to have a state championship. And number two, I do not know how you can, how that would even work to do three seasons overlap with coaches and students. And I do know in years past, I'm not sure right now, I know we've had football coaches and basketball coaches, as head varsity coaches. So that was one of my concerns. But the other concern was to me is, is that 21 days of practice prior to any event, does that conditioning count for any of that?
Okay, so let me try and unpack this.
I've thrown a lot at you, but I want these kids back.
That's quite all right, Ms. Herbert. I always look forward to the questions. The 20-day rule applies to every sport that the MPSAA offers with the exception of golf. And it does, it does not, that calendar, that timeline does not begin until we begin athletics as part of our program. Right now, we are in part of the two-semester plan. That 20-day does not apply at all. So until we were to begin, that is when the clock starts on the 20 days.
Well, our most important thing is to get schools open, but I really do want athletics to start and any other curricular activity to start as soon as possible after that. I don't know, that's not my job to figure out schedules, but I'm sure you've already worked on things, and that is my suggestion. But the most important thing is education and the extracurriculars, but they are so important to our students for their well-being. I do know that.
Ms. Herbert, I could not agree with you more. I stand by the importance of extracurriculars and not just restricted to athletics. I think it's essential for our students to be engaged in some level. What I will say is, as part of our return-to-play program, which we're working on our two-semester plan right now, there is the flexibility and the availability to bring students into the school for other extracurricular activities, for other clubs and activities beyond just athletics. So that does exist at this point, that staff can work with the administration to accommodate those needs, to find ways to engage students within the buildings. I will also say that there is, there has been a motion, a suggestion coming through the MPSAA to alter the two-semester timeline. At this point in time, it has, it was, it has gone through the MPSAA Executive Council. I know it has been passed on to superintendents. It's not formally been approved by MSDE yet, but it is a potential that it could be, that instead of starting on February 1, it would start on December 7 with winter sports. That would allow each school system, again, it's a possibility. I don't, I'm not selling this as this is a guarantee and we can definitely do this because it still would need the support of MSDE, but it would extend seasons and remove the overlap. It would, instead of having five-week seasons, it would allow for, I believe, seven-plus, six-plus or seven-plus. And when I say that, it means we can, it starts on a Friday, so, and then you'd have six full weeks of games plus that Friday. So you'd kind of get a little more than a week, or you'd get additional games. But it completely removes the overlap. So that's something that we have, we were strongly in favor of. We're hopeful that MSDE will support, would support that as an option. Because to be bluntly honest with all of you, and I'm certain you would rather I not beat around the bush, our time is really, really tight if we want to begin a fall season. And by really tight, you would need to say go tonight so that we would have to tell parents and families and coaches, we have to start by Monday. Otherwise, we can't get a fall season in.
And by start, what exactly do you mean by start? Like, when would games actually happen?
20 days, they could begin 20 days after that. However, the 20 days falls on a Sunday, so whatever that, I think it's November 2 is that first Monday. But that would require anyone who, for example, students who are not participating in our conditioning of return-to-play program, they would need to be scrambling to get physicals. We would have, it would be a scramble. I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it would be, it's a lot to throw on it. We are going to have to coordinate with all of our officials and so forth. But having spoken with our athletic directors, it's possible.
Okay, now, I know I've talked to some football coaches. Now, have you been talking to them and what's their feelings? You know, that's a big sport. I mean, to, with the equipment, and they can only play once a week, and they play under, they'll have to play under the lights. What have you, have you found the same What, what have you, have you found the same thing that they want to play?
I think all of our coaches want to give our students an opportunity.
Absolutely.
And I, but I also think, as I've heard from some coaches, there's, there is concern about the safety, um, involved in the physical participation. And what we are dealing with now, even in our return to play programs, is that we're, um, having to deal with cases that are occurring in the community. And I, and that is going to very likely, and Mr. Singer would be much, uh, more versed in this than I, very likely going to explode through physical contact in athletics, um, to the degree that we are now increasing.
Well, I just go, I, I've been out and about the last couple of days for personal things. And let me tell you, they're playing sports all around us. They're playing north and south. I saw a football practice up in Pennsylvania and, uh, they had their pads on and everything. And then, of course, as I've said before, I go by four seasons and there they are. And then, of course, Justin Sheet sent us the email. They are actually playing, it's just rec. And I, I just can't, it, it doesn't make sense that they can do that and we cannot be playing on our fields. It's, just makes no sense. I know there will be, uh, things that we have to take care of in the locker room. I've lived in, I lived in the locker room for 40 years. And yes, they, uh, you have perspiration, you have sweat, you have body odor. But we, you, we've got protocols, so, um, but it, it's not right that we're not playing sports when it's all around us. And also, I do know that there are other counties looking to us to see if we open because they're going to open because you've got Allegheny, Garrett and Washington already open. And I know right around us, there are other counties looking to see what we're going to do and they're going to make a decision. So.
Absolutely. I know Frederick voted today, uh, and I know Howard, I believe, is meeting shortly and Arundel voted yesterday, so I'm aware.
What did Frederick decide?
Frederick, um, decided to, uh, hold to the two semester plan. That was their unanimous decision.
Mr. Duffy, what does, what are some of the specifics of the revised two semester plan that you talked about? And how likely is it that MSDE would, or, uh, I'm sorry, wrong word, is it MS?
No, you're right.
MPSAA, it's a word, it's a mouth.
That they would, um, approve that revised schedule?
Sure. Um, some of the particulars, as opposed to starting on, um, February 1, it starts December 7th. It allows, um, competitions to begin early January with winter sports. It has spring sports beginning, I believe in, uh, excuse me, fall sports. So I get a little, I think winter and immediately go to spring. Sorry, I've been doing this too long. Anyway, winter into fall, fall would begin in early March and, um, and then spring to begin in April. And it, it would extend from five-week seasons to, I believe, six or seven-week seasons. It might be seven plus. I, I don't have it in front of me. If you give me a moment, I'll look at it. It would extend to longer seasons and remove the overlap where we wouldn't have students, um, dealing with the final two weeks of one season, um, while the next season is already beginning with tryouts, uh, and team selection. And trying to get prepared with only one week as a full team because of that overlap for those multi-sport students as well as the, uh, facility issues in which we would run. You are correct in saying MSDE on this one. It passed through MPSAA. It then falls to MSDE. I know, um, Dr. Lockard has seen it because I believe the superintendents were asked to weigh in on that as well. And it, and it, it did have the support of the supervisors around the state, including the three who have, um, who are overseeing programs that have already begun in the year-long plan, which are, as Ms. Herbert mentioned, Garrett Allegheny and Washington County.
And when did they decide to change this and get rid of that two-week overlap?
This came through the MPSAA Executive Council and through the supervisors that as, as we reviewed it more, that the pro, there were too many concerns and problems. We're talking about overuse injuries for students, overuse for fields, um, multi-sport coaches, multi-sport students. It was really, it was trying to see, because it started, the two semester plan, I'm sorry, let me backtrack a moment. The February date started mostly because the majority of school systems acro, uh, across the state where a large number of them said they weren't going to come back to in-person learning until February 1 or until the second semester. So when they said they weren't going to return until Feb, until the second semester, their plan was then to return to af, in-person athletics because as you all have stated, uh, quite well, it doesn't send a really strong message to begin in-person athletics prior to in-person education. It really, um, doesn't fall in line with what we believe education-based sports is, that it should be a part of it, not separate and starting first. So when that, but as more school systems talked about returning in some level, we began to review the feasibility, the possibility of starting earlier so that we could try and eliminate some of those problems that that February to June calendar raised and trying to find what, what could make it work. And that was what passed, um, as I said, through the MPSAA Executive Council. The supervisors then wrote a letter to the superintendents asking for their support in this. So I, I don't want to sell it as this is a done deal because I, I can't, I, I don't want to mislead you. What I can tell you is it has support of two groups, uh, who are heavily involved in sports, but it still need, still would need, and, and, sorry, one of these days I'll get these words out correctly, MSDE support for that to move forward.
So when, when did you find this out? Because this changed the playing field from last week to this week. And that's not fair. That's, uh, I mean, did, when did you find this out?
Well, it passed through the MPSAA Executive Council, but in, uh, about a week and a half ago. But it wasn't anything more than a suggestion. It didn't get to the, uh, superintendents until, I believe, late last week and Dr. Lockard would be able to better answer that than I. So, and I don't, and I didn't find out that it received that support until early this week. So I'm kind of giving you the information as, I, I don't want to, I don't want to tell you things before I think it has any level of support because then it sounds like I'm just, um, selling things that I, that aren't in existence.
Yeah, it just aggravates me because it's, changes the playing field now because the biggest complaint everybody was saying, now you're going to, might change that.
It could and, and I'll be honest, I think support from boards of education in addition to supervisors, in addition to superintendents would, would carry weight. I don't, I, I'm speculating because I don't know the inner workings of MSDE. Thankfully, I don't work, uh, in, in that, in that realm. I'm, I'm much happier where I am with you all. But I, I, I can't imagine that would hurt our, our case in any way, uh, to have the, to have that support.
If I could just chime in, I, I, I would certainly be glad to write a letter to support the, that, that concept because it puts us in a position where we don't have to manage both of those, uh, potential bubbles at the same time. And I, I'd also say that we have seen, even though we got sports all around us, we've seen a number of outbreaks amongst sports teams. And in fact, I had one employee who's had to stay home with her kid because he's playing football up in, uh, Pennsylvania where, where the, the entire team got quarantined. So I, I just, I'm, I'm a little concerned, as I said, about starting school at the same time we're starting sports. And I, I'd do anything I could to support that second option that you're talking about because at least we could get our feet on the ground and figure out where things are going with, uh, with in-person learning before we get back to the, uh, back to the playing field.
Mr. Duffy, when would the second option potentially start? And I know, and, and Ms. Herbert, in, in his defense, you guys, I forget, had how many proposals in? And you were shocked by October 7th as much as we were because none of your proposals matched that. So I, I know what you're dealing with. When would that potentially start and would there be, uh, an end-of-season tournament?
At this point in time, end-of-season tournaments are still being, have still not been wait, have not been ruled in or ruled out. I will tell you, I have a, my general concern about end-of-season, I'm sorry, that, it does, I believe, leave the flexibility for culminating tournament. I don't want to get into the wording of state tournament because the, the complication of a state tournament is we already have three school systems who are participating in a state-approved calendar as opposed to the state-approved, as opposed to the o, other optional state-approved calendar. And to say one's a state, one level would be a state championship and the other would not, for me is problematic. And I've, and I've stated my case quite clearly to people. But I believe, but it does allow for a culminating tournament or a culminating activity. That has been not entire, not completely finalized and clarified exactly what that will be because there's going to be some flexibility and it may mean a county, a regional, there's different options. But it does allow for that. Um, if you give me a moment, I'm pulling up, um, that particular, um, calendar so I can give you more information on the December 7th. It would have December 7th, uh, as the start date for winter sports.
For practice?
The first available play date would be the first day back from winter break on January 4th. And then, uh, fall sports could begin, it, it's strange to say this, but fall sports could begin on, um, February 13th. And with prac, with the first play date being March 5th. And then spring sports beginning on April 17th, followed by a May 7th first play date.
Mr. Duffy, one thing I've been hearing from some parents is they, they really don't care if their kid plays another team outside the county. They, they, you know, is there a way we can just do fall sports possibly start, you know, November 2nd? Have a couple in-county games, whether it's three or four. Whether it be soccer, football, and those are the contact sports that, obviously, those are the more the concern. But they're also the sports that these kids are already playing right now with rec councils that are crossing county and state lines. So why can't we look at possibly November 2nd? Have the fall sports, have them play within each other here in the county, just a couple of games. And it just gives them that little bit. I don't, I don't think these schools are worried about state championships and a title or anything right now. I really don't think they're worried about that. It's more of the kids getting out on that field. And then move into the winter sports and then move into the spring sports and then look at that winter and spring as far as then outside the county, um, then those championships. I mean, I, I honestly, I don't see why we can't even go ahead and start golf. That's a non-contact sport. You're, you're chasing a ball down a field. I, I mean, that's one person doing that. So I don't understand why that, something like that can't even go ahead and start. So I, I think that's a lot of what we're hearing from parents and students is they just want to get on the field and they don't care if they play, you know, Francis Scott Key plays Man Valley one game. They're fine with that. It, it's just getting them something so they have that experience and they have that passion that they want to do.
Mr. Taglia, I understand your point. And as I've said, i, if that is the directive that, that we are given, we can move forward with that. I think I just want to make clear, because I, I, I believe everyone's understanding, but also want to make sure that anybody, um, who, who is seeing this is clear that we are going to need to pick one of the two options. So if we start now, we are going to, we will essentially be, um, and, and I think realistically, there's a good chance in either of the two models, we would be participating in a county-only level. I think that's, it gives us the most safe, um, uh, version and, um, possibility and, and least, um, least amount of travel is better for all of this as well. But that we would be, we're going to be one of the, one of four counties who will be participating in, in that particular level throughout the state. So we're going to be playing on a different calendar than others. I'm not saying that, that's either good nor is it bad. I just want to make sure that people are clear about that. There's nothing moving. We couldn't move one to the other. There are some complications with that November 2nd. And I'll use field hockey as an example. I, I'm not, I've, I've seen, I see both sides. I see all, actually, I think I see all sides of this and I, I see some po, there are positives. There are pros and cons to each of them. But field hockey, for example, we would not be able to play our traditional field hockey games with the JV and varsity game because at that point, there is no daylight saving. There would be barely enough daylight, um, to get in one game. So we certainly, so that was, that's going to provide some, uh, complications, alternate days as well, or potentially alternate days, potentially Saturdays. So there, there are some, um, some issues in that. However, that, that's not, the same issue is going to happen. Well, actually, by the time we hit to the fall with the actual games, that would be, I believe, uh, after the daylight savings time, daylight saving time begins in the spring, um, in that other model. But you all provide the direction and we'll go. As I said, there are, we can make these work one way or another. There, as I, but my biggest issue is it's a real short turnaround if we want to go with the fall.
So if we, let's, we're going to open on the 19th. The first day of practice would be November 2nd and then.
No, ma'am. That, no, we would need to start Monday, the 12th, this Monday, five days. In order to get.
Right.
What, what we would call realistically a fall season. Otherwise, we are shortchanging fall to a couple of games and then providing, uh, a, a more complete winter and a more complete spring. We're talking fall. Golf is going to be complicated if we start later as far as getting in their matches. Granted, they don't have the 20-day rule, but still, it's going to be complicated based on lack of daylight saving or a lack of daylight at that point. So realistically, that's kind of our timeframe.
Okay, I was just going through this because we had talked about doing it two weeks after school started. So that was going to put us way back, uh, day, the, you know, daylight changes, uh, the, I think November 1st or whatever. And, um, there, there was, I was just trying to figure, I was just looking at my calendar and I'm thinking, how?
Well, they're, they're doing conditioning now, correct?
But that does not count for, uh, the 21 days, correct? You, that's what you said, right?
The 20 days does not begin until we begin the fall season. This point in time is not the fall season. This is fall sports, return to play, uh, sports skills right now. But it is not part of the season. The season does not begin, the MPSAA season as permitted through the two options. We're October 7th and that's today and we're not ready to start and we haven't done our sign-up. So ours, as I said, Monday is the, is pretty much, and, and that's really flying through. It would be our first day and that's where the 20 days begins. And whenever, whether the date is February 1 or December 7, depending on where that goes, that's when the 20-day rule kicks in. Additionally, what I will mention is that this conditioning in this program right now is not part of the 20 days because it's, it's completely voluntary. And has, and has had, and will have, as we explained to people from the beginning, zero bearing on who makes teams. So it, this couldn't be part of our 20 days.
These kids are already playing now.
Dr. Lockard, when the superintendents have looked at this, the, the, the December 7th possibility, did you get a feel for how that would, might go? I mean.
Because that seems like a no-brainer option, right? Like, that's the best of, right, if it gets approved.
There was support, uh, from the superintendent group for sure, um, but that's not our decision to approve it. And so, uh, I know Michael mentioned, uh, athletic supervisors, MPSAA, I'll, I'll support that as well. That's something for MSDE, uh, to approve. And that's what he's saying is that's, he's sharing that with you because that's another option that's being put out there, but it's not something that has been offered yet. It's not something that's available to us yet. And so I understand there's a little bit of risk if we're waiting for that and it doesn't materialize.
And what is the risk? So if it doesn't get approved, then?
Then our option is the second semester plan.
And they're, and they're, they're doubled up and that means, um, students, athlete, yeah, there's an overlap of two weeks. And athletes and coaches then have problems with that. Because you've got some coaches that, that coach fall and fall, winter, spring, you know, they do them all. And it's, uh, usually two at, at a varsity, but, um.
Well, what would be a reason why the MSDE would not approve it? Because, I mean, on paper, this seems like a much better setup than, than the current second semester plan.
You're smiling, Mr. Duffy.
Um, I, I, I'm being cautious with my words, Mr. Tyler. Just because everything seems obvious and, and the most logical and makes sense doesn't mean everyone always wants to go that way. I'll just say that much.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to understand what the arguments against it would be so that we could try, just trying to figure out, you know, what are, what are the rules of the game and we can try to play by those.
I think the football coaches just wanted to get, get their season in, you know, and I get that. But I, we've already stated that we were not going to have schools. We were going to start school first and then two weeks after, and that's not going to work.
It doesn't seem like that works for the current October 7th option.
And, and Mr. Singer, I think you're still on. You, well, I won't, I won't stay a statement. I'll ask a question. Would you be comfortable with any November date if we, we would say tonight, this is going to be our start of practice? Are you comfortable with a specific date?
So, so what I, I was saying is, we're, we're back in, we're back in school on the 19th. I, I really think we need to see what that looks like because we do have a relatively high number of cases circulating in the county and, and see how easy that is to manage. And I think it's really going to take a few weeks before we could, could see that. So I would be thinking we'd want to wait three weeks before we'd start sports. You, you know, you might be able to push it to two, depending on how, how things look, and once we get started. I mean, I, I'll just use McDaniel College as an example, and, and I think they're doing very well. But the, the first week they, they started back, we were scrambling because they, I, I think they might have had 40 or 50 total kids in, in quarantine and, and on, on their campus because of the number of positives we had and the number of people who had had close contact. Now, we're getting one or two cases here or there, a- and, you know, maybe, maybe six or seven people in quarantine at a time. And I think when you guys first go back to school, this is going to be really hard on us and your staff as we try to to manage out the cases that'll, that'll initially happen with this a- as we go back to school, just because we're going to be identifying those and, and working out glitches. And once, once things get settled in, I'm hoping that we, we get into a rhythm where, where we're not going to have problems, and it's going to be, hopefully, easier for us to manage. And, and my, my biggest concern is that first week or two that, that you're back in school.
Mr. Kyler, may I, may I clarify something, and also for everybody else regarding the timeline of the two? I, I gave you the timeline for the two semester plan if it moves up to December. But the timeline for the October 7th, it clearly lays out the seasons. School systems are allowed to begin anytime after October 7th. However, they need to be completed by Feb, excuse me, by December 12th. That's when the fall season begins, and the spring, and the winter season begins on December 14th. So if we were to delay until November 2nd as a potential first day of practice for that fall season, that would mean the first available playdate would be that Monday, the 23rd of Thanksgiving week.
Thanksgiving week, yeah.
That makes, for a difficult week of games, then the next week would be a full week, which is, excuse me, December, November 30th. And then, the final week would be December 7th to the 12th.
So, so essentially, and that was going to be my question for you. If we, if we would say November 2nd or November 9th, we're essentially sacrificing the fall season.
That's correct, sir. That's, that would be even less than the February plan as far as competition opportunities for students.
And if I could jump in, as the, I'm in the unique position of being a fall sport parent, and also, if we reflect back on what we, we heard last week from an assistant, I'm sorry, an athletic director and principal who are going to help manage this, the December date would help to mitigate some of their concerns. And for myself, as a fall sport parent, my daughter would get much more of a, a lengthy field hockey season than if we tried to start now. And, and I mean, I think it's, the calendar's going to seem odd because they won't be playing when they're used to playing, but they may get more of a, a true experience for their, you know, only junior, senior, sophomore year of that sport. And trust me, as a youth coach, I have many friends and kids and parents asking me, please, please, please start sports. But when we've, we've had all these conversations, we've heard from Mr. Singer, I, I think the December 7th start date, if we can get the support from MSD, is the best compromise for all the things that I think we all want to do for our kids. It gives these kids the best experience that we can give as we sit here on the 7th of October.
Well, what can we collectively do as a community to make sure that the December 7th option is approved? Is there anything that we can do? And, because that seems like the, the best option for the kids and, and the community.
Dr. Salmon and her group, correct?
Yeah, they might not approve it. Then that's a, that's a
I think President Savigny and our superintendent should piggyback the great rapport they developed with her and, and encourage her.
I, I don't know, because MS, I mean, they came out and said they want schools open, they want sports to start, and she could, they could vote that down very easily. So
But it sounds like we're essentially, we're, we're not helping the fall sports if we do something. E- even if we say today we're a week late.
Well, I, yeah, I, I'm looking at the time schedule. It's almost impossible. It's impossible. If we, as a group, said we're not going to start till two weeks after, it's impossible to, to do it.
It ends up being a really abbreviated fall schedule.
Oh, yeah, it's, what, they get three football games in, and one's on a thing, on Thanksgiving weekend. So that's
I think, I mean, from everything I've been hearing from the community, they'd be fine with that. They'd be fine with just a couple of games, just to get something in. You know, I mean, I think
Well, my question would be, and I don't know whether it's a Mr. Duffy or a superintendent question. Let's say we say we like this December calendar, and they don't do it. Can we just do a Carroll County only and do three seasons and start them the first week of December and play each other and do it?
Right, what's the repercussion if, if we follow that schedule and they don't approve it at the, at MSD?
Unfortunately, we're not able to go off on, on, on our own on this. As one of, as part of the master agreement with the MPSSAA, each of the local school systems has signed on to that, that we will abide by the rules given through that. We don't, and I did have someone else ask me that, and I, I appreciate the outside-the-box thinking, but unfortunately, we are kind of bound as a, as a signatory to the MPSSAA master agreement. We will follow through a- as it is written for them.
No exceptions for a global pandemic? I mean, come on.
President Savigny, you make a great point. I, when we come up for the, the next time, maybe we can see if we can add in a little bullet point for exceptions on global pandemics.
Now, is this also going to follow along with marching band, drama productions? Like, is, is there an outline regarding any of that as well? Like, because they're, they're having, you know, they have marching band competitions, drama productions, anything of that nature? Like, is there, is there an outline to go along with those activities as well?
There is nothing equivalent to the MPSSAA master agreement for other extracurricular activities. MPSSAA is unique. Has been for, for decades.
So there's no fine arts outline for those organizations?
No, they don't, they don't have 21 days of marching band practice or anything like that.
I can't speak to
Don't think so.
All-state band or something like that, but there is nothing akin to MPSSAA with respect to our own extracurricular activities with the exception of sports. Sports is unique.
No, I, I mean, no, I understand that.
Whole section of Comar on sports, there's nothing equivalent for band dramatic productions or anything like that.
No, I completely, and I think I might be, someone might misunderstand me here. I, I know sports is completely different than marching band and drama productions. I'm asking is, is there something that we have outlined or someone has outlined somewhere regarding those activities as well? Because marching band is around the same time as football, soccer, and field hockey. Drama productions are typically winter, spring. So that's why I'm asking is, has there been any discussion or outline or any guidance on those activities as well?
Cindy or Eric, do you want to speak to that? We have a lot of discretion there. We're not bound to MPSSAA rules and regulations. Do you want to speak to those?
Those, those activities were approved in the Phase 2 Return to Play Committee that we included Mr. Stewart, who represented marching band, et cetera. So, the principals actually have received that information over the last few days. Those activities are free to start as long as they're meeting the standards that were approved in writing by Mr. Singer. And I know they're already in talks to begin marching band. Drama can start productions on a smaller scale. FFAs, SGA's, key clubs. So the door is open for those events to occur. Of course, they're going to have to follow all the procedures and standards, but yeah. We don't have a state organization that oversees them. I mean, they have specific things like has been mentioned, they may not have a state band competition, and FFA has their competitions that they want to attend, that they have to, you know, live up to those standards. But we are starting those ASAP. As soon as those advisors are ready to go, those activities can begin.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so what if we, so, practice would start, we're saying the practice would start on November 2nd. So for the, for the October 7th option, we're saying that we had to push back, and we would start practice on November 2nd. 20 days from there would be?
November 23rd, realistically.
Okay, November 23rd, and then you'd be able to get in how many games before the, the cutoff on December 12?
Well, it goes by sport, depending on how many they can play in a week. But if you want to talk football, because that would be the fewest. You would be able to get three if you are using Thanksgiving weekend. That would allow for three. Golf and field hockey are going to be very complicated by the lack of daylight saving, but they're going to be complicated one way or another. Golf would not. In an earlier mode, golf wouldn't have that issue because they could get most of their, because golf without the 20-day rule doesn't have as much of a concern, because they could start earlier, they could get a lot of it in before daylight saving. In this scenario, they would not. But you could theoretically, you'd get three football games, and depending on what you did with Thanksgiving week, you could get, as I see, five, it would be crunch, but about five or six soccer, field hockey, soccer, field hockey, volleyball games.
And so, we would need to do a lot of planning and, and scheduling to try to make that happen, to just get three games in, right, for, for football, at least, three games for football. But i- is it possible that we could start, is that better than having the, all the condensed three seasons of sports in, starting in February? I guess, so that we could start planning down that road? And then, if the December 7th option is approved, that we switch to using that one, right? Like, we wouldn't have violated anything at that point. So I, I guess I'm curious, is the, is the, what we're losing in the fall by doing the delayed October 7th option, I guess, is that still considered better than
We're, we're giving the fall sports a third of a season. I don't think that's fair.
And Mr. Duffy, if we start on the 2nd, you've got to have 21 days in, so you, they couldn't even play on when is Thanksgiving? The 21st or the 20, I mean, that weekend, is that the 20? They wouldn't be able to play until the 22nd. So yeah, they would, they'd be able to play that weekend, Thanksgiving weekend, and then they have, what, two more weeks?
That's correct, Ms. Harper.
That's it.
That is correct.
Uh, Friday the 4th and Friday the 11th of December.
Yes, ma'am.
That's not fair either.
I think we need to push the state for the December 7th, which we've had a zero batting average on pushing the state.
Yeah, because
I guess I'm thinking, but I, I just, I can't see, given the fall sports, and again, you know, my favorite sport's winter, but that's not fair. You know, to have the, the good winter and spring season and, and, and I looked at, that's about a third of a season, right, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, sir, it is. Football's, football's complicated. It does allow, the, that calendar does allow for a culminating activity the following week, but in football, which would allow, for example, a county tournament level of type thing. But football doesn't really lend itself to such a thing, so it, it would, I, I'm not sure we could get in a fourth game with football. Maybe I could be creative and come up with something, but even then, you're still talking about slightly over, you're doing less than half a fall season and providing more, fuller seasons for the, the, the next two seasons, but fall is, does wind up getting shortchanged.
I just think something better than nothing. I mean, that's, I mean, that's what I keep hearing from a lot of these students from the emails I was receiving, is something would be better than nothing. And if they just got that little bit of, especially if they're a senior, like, this is, this is what they're remembering. This is their, you know, I want to be on that football field one more time. I want to, you know, hit the ball into the goalie one more time. And that's just something I just constantly heard from a lot of students, was they, this is their senior year, and if they can just have that one last moment, it, it's a lot of meaning to them.
Well, I think we're saying that they would, right? It's just going to be in the spring instead of in the fall.
But that was the thing too, is that somebody, they play a fall sport, a winter sport, and then a spring sport. So, you know, having it, like, it would coincide, it might overlap, you know, and they
Well, we said it wouldn't overlap, right, if we went with the December?
They just don't want to take the chance.
Yeah, they
Right. And Do we know when that's on the agenda for MSD?
No, we don't. We just submitted a, a letter late last week, so.
Is it MSD or the State Board?
It was sent to Dr. Salmon.
MSD, yeah.
I would think it's Dr. Sam.
Yes. Okay, so the State Board event.
Right.
And she said there and said she wanted sports open.
Can we get, can we band together with other school systems? I mean, is there any way that we can garner enough support to, to get the better option?
It, that option, President Savigny, has the support of, I, and Dr. Locker, go correct me, I believe has the support of 21 or 22 of the supervisors and super, I believe all the superintendents were in favor, but I believe 21 or 22 of the 24 supervisors
Right.
supported that same start date. So finding other groups with whom you could band together, I, I think would be pretty easy. Because everyone seems to find this a- as the middle ground that allowed for more opportunity for students.
Okay, so if 21 out of the 24 school systems support this in the state of Maryland, and really, it's the other three that have already voted for the, the October 7th, or the, the ones that you're talking about, right? Before December 7th was an option.
I think
I would think it's like
I think we have to hang our hat and trying to get that through.
At that point, how can they say no? I mean, if, if
Well, they didn't know about October 7th either. And so, when's the first day they can practice again? If, if you do the, the other system, not the one now, when you spread out your, the, the second option?
December 7th, right?
December?
The first practice date would be December 7th, yes, ma'am. And that actually extends beyond, that plan gives longer than 20 days because the 20 days would be up during winter break. And to allow schools and school systems to handle potential cleaning over winter break, the 20 days actually extends into January. So instead of being the 20 days, it winds up being four weeks, 28 days, actually.
There wouldn't be any winter tournaments or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
So that, there's no winter tournaments or anything like that?
That is correct. That, that would not be a part of it. Yes, ma'am.
And how long does that season go till?
Uh, February 13th. If you give me a moment, I can tell you exactly how many weeks that is.
So, so Mr. Duffy, the, the second semester plan as is, is five weeks for each season?
Five weeks of competition, yes, sir.
What's the, what's the December 7th one get us? Another week or so?
Give me one second, just making sure. It provides six weeks for the winter season. And provides I believe seven plus for the fall season, and I believe it does the seven plus for the spring season. When I say seven plus, it gives seven full weeks, but it begins on a Friday. So for example, with football, if, if my seven plus is correct, or six plus, it would be, that Friday would be the first week, and then you could play six full weeks beyond that, or
And what's your dates again for the fall season?
Uh, the fall season, give me one moment again, so I'll make sure I have it correct. Sorry, too many, too many tabs open at the moment. The fall season would be, begin on February 13th for practices, and competitions would begin on Friday, would be available to begin on Friday, March 5th. And they would conclude by the 17th of April.
Now, the, the, the spring sports, does that go all the way into June then?
Yes, ma'am, it still does. It goes from, April 17th is the first playdate, and the last playdate goes to June 19th.
That's interesting.
Which is the exact same, that's the same end date as the February 1. And that does not extend, it is already extended, it doesn't extend it further in this model. All it does is spread things out by starting, really, almost two months earlier. Spreading out and expanding the amount of time available to play.
Because it always started on 15th. Used to.
I'm sorry?
It's okay.
DaVinci, what are you hearing from students?
Again, like as the board says, there's very, like, it's on both sides because students, of course, they want to come out and play. They want to be on the field. But at the same time, they really want to have that full season, that opportunity to play against different teams. I think, like, with that balancing act currently, the second semester plan is the best thing because at least the students get the whole season for each sport. I understand that students, they really want to get onto the field right now, and that is completely valid. But, so they have that full season, and that opportunity to fully play, I think that that's the best option.
Thank you.
I think we've got to put our hopes on December 7th, if 21 of the 24 want it. And we've got to do some emails and push for it. And, and Dr. Locker, I don't think I have to ask. You're probably, we need everything to fall in place very nicely to be comfortable starting sports November 2nd or November 9th.
Yes.
It's, I think we're laying, we could end up with football having two weeks or something. And I just think, I don't think that's fair to them.
No, it's not, two weeks, two or three games is not enough.
A lot of the kids are doing wreck stuff, they're doing other things. I know all of them can't, and I feel for them. But I think a six, seven-week season, they deserve that.
Yeah, I just feel bad for those kids, just period. But it's, it's, that's not fair for that fall season because they really get gypped. I mean, big time, to have three, three or four football games is not enough. And I understand about hockey because, and you've got two teams, you've got a varsity and JV. And same thing with boys and girls soccer. You're, you're not going to have enough fields, and you're all going to fight or playing under the lights. And that's not, that's, that's going to be a problem. And yes, they did play hockey under the lights back in, before time, but.
I was going to ask you, Ms. Herbert, I'm like.
Yes, we did.
I mean, I know, like, you know, it's kind of like a big deal, you know, if they get the chance to play under the lights for one night.
And I understand why, it was changed. But that's, you're, you're going to run out of daylight.
And, and, and I don't know if you mentioned tonight during the meeting, the, the, the opening ceremony for Career and Tech, but there were politicians there who said, how can we support you? And I think this needs to be the first thing, is, is get them to get some emails in saying, yes, we are opening schools, and no, we don't want to do sports before the education, but we want to do sports in December. And push for it. I think we got to.
Right. I think there's such a strong argument to be made for, for December 7th.
And I understand that.
Well, and again, that goes along with the focus that we had set the last time with at least focusing on the instructional program to get that off the ground and then hopefully be ready to move into sports. And again, I think as you were discussing it, you know, it just seems to make sense in, at this time because, again, it would give them, you know, that longer playing season. They'd have more opportunities with their competitions. Plus, again, it wouldn't be as much of the overlap that we were looking at earlier.
The only trouble is it's not going to help these kids trying to get into colleges.
Yeah, I know. Well, I'm wondering, are colleges going to be sort of relooking at, you know?
They have to.
Yeah, we're certainly not the only school system, you know, that's facing this issue. I, I think that colleges have to be doing something differently for, and Mr. King, do you have any insight on that? Or Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, can you repeat that, please? Go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, again, we're saying that the December 7th timeframe would sit our bill a number, in a couple of ways. Again, it would allow us to focus on the instructional program, getting that started first. And then secondly, once we would start with the sports in December, the students would have more competitions, plus it would get rid of the overlaps with some of the sports. And the question was asked about, you know, the kids who are seeking scholarships for, for sports. When I heard that comment, I'm thinking, well, are colleges making any adjustments to, you know, maybe when they're awarding scholarships? Or when they're looking at, you know, the different sports that they're going to be granting scholarships for?
Right now, I do know colleges are requiring that they got to have their football tapes in by February. And that's.
If I could comment on that?
Yes.
If that's okay. Because being that I still coach, and I've been doing coaching in high school for over 41 years, I can tell you that I'm getting emails and texts from college coaches now asking me for recommendations. Whereas before, I would have to send information to them without being solicited. Now they're soliciting for me to send them any seniors I have that they think, and believe I got them before, but it's not the same, it's just not the same. It's much more coming in now from colleges, asking about the type of student athlete that they're looking for, and can I suggest people? And like I said, I've got them before, but it's just a lot different right now. Get a lot more information like that. I'm sure other coaches are getting the same thing.
Yeah, it's, it, it puts these football players in a bad situation. Yeah, and I don't, you know, it's.
Why does it put them in a bad situation?
Well, because they need their, they need their game films in by February, and they're, they're not getting any.
You're not hearing me then?
Well, no, I'm, I'm hearing you.
College coaches are now asking the high school coaches for recommendations and information on the student athletes, much more than they were before. So I don't see how it puts anyone in a bad situation, they're all doing the same thing.
The colleges are adapting to this situation.
Yes, and I understand that.
And, and if you're a senior, you should have your game tape done by now.
Right, and let me tell you, and I know there are parents out there now paying people to videotape their kids doing, you know, throwing, passing, punting, field goal kicking, you know.
Mr. King, I know she started by asking, you're a fall sports guy.
No problem, this, I appreciate the current high school coach's perspective on this. I mean, I think if, if the state of Maryland is all in the same place, and we have to accept the fact that there may be some counties in Maryland that don't play fall sports at all, I think the college, college coaches are going to adjust. And I still, I stick with the fact that I want to see our kids all three seasons play as many games as we can provide them. And I say that as a, as a principal, as a director, and as a parent. And the timelines are adjusted all over the country. And I think the colleges that are looking to recruit our kids are going to understand that. And if, if honestly, our wonderful head coaches are asked for more recommendation, like Commissioner Frazier said, I'm not uncomfortable with that. And I think that helps us to even push the kids with great character, along with the kids that are great athletes. So I guess that would be my opinion on the college recruiting process.
All right, so we are saying that we're going to push as hard as we can on the December 7th option. But that, that inherently means that the, if it doesn't get approved, that the second semester plan option would be the only thing that we could go with, right?
And, and fall sports will still get more games with that than they would if we jumped now.
Right.
So I think we got to.
You want to take a, make a motion and take a vote on that?
Yeah, I, I guess just the one last thing that I was thinking is that, you know, spring sports last year got nothing, right? And so we certainly don't want to, so the fact that, you know, fall would get a couple of games, right? Like, it's still better than what spring got last year. So you don't want spring to get shortchanged again, right, since they got nothing last year. So I'm just trying to think about the carryover effect. I still think that the December 7th option is certainly the, the best option. I just want to make sure that we're all okay with saying that, that we're, that we're punting on the October 7th and.
So, so knowing what we know now, the, the proper motion is just that we're not going with the October?
I, I think the motion would be to have the Carroll County Public Schools follow the MP double, excuse me, MP double S double A season, whether it be the December 7th start date or the one that has already been approved beginning in February. Because those are the only two options if you don't opt to start on Monday.
Correct.
Mr. Kyler, if I may, the correct terminology from the MPSAA is that is the two semester plan. Now, when that two semester plan begins, that, it seems to be a bit in flux at the moment. But I guess your motion might be to follow the two semester plan.
Yep, very good.
Yes, so it'll still have that name?
Yes, sir, because it's still, we're still able to continue doing what we are doing now in the fall semester to engage our students.
And that is the other point, is they still can do drills and conditioning.
Up until, up until we start a season, yes, sir.
So the motion then would be that we are going to push as a system, provide whatever support we can to follow the two semester plan and get that. If, if that becomes an option that's approved by the MSDE, that, that is what we would follow. And if that doesn't get approved, then we would follow the condensed three seasons.
Well, either way, it's the two semester plan, right?
Yep.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm sorry, I sort of cut you off.
I think what Mr. Duffy said is that either way, it is still the two semester plan.
Oh, okay, either way.
The two semester plan is the February start date. The proposed revision to the two semester plan is the December 7th start date.
Okay, okay.
Or, as I said, we could just say we're not taking the October 7th option. But, and that's our intent. Marcy, Ms. Herbert, you want to make a motion since you started this?
No.
No?
Uh-uh, because I'm, I'm.
I know, you're still in a dilemma.
I'm in a dilemma because we're going to try to play football from February 13th to April 17th. I coached track and field for years, and let me tell you, we didn't get out much. I know it didn't start then, but I, I just, it's, it's, the weather is not good to play outside from February till at least the middle, the end of April. I know that because it coats.
Worst case, football would be, the play dates would be April 5th to May 8th.
It's just not the same.
No, you're looking at the spring.
No, they would have to be over April 17th. Yes, April 17th, correct? Am I correct on that, Mr. Duffy?
And in the adjusted timeline, Ms. Herbert, I believe your numbers are correct, I'm pulling it up again. The first play date would be March 5th, and the final play date would be April 17th. For the fall season. Under the adjusted December 7th.
If it went to December 7th.
Yes.
It's not the same. I mean, I think football, you know, I think the Kenny Chesney song, "Boys of Fall", I mean, it's running on that field, the dirt, the lights. You're not going to have the crowd, obviously, we can't do that, but it's just, it's just being there with your teammate.
I will say the March 5th date does go in line with, that is usually when lacrosse is.
Absolutely, oh, yeah.
Yep.
And they're having, they're, they're, they've started usually on March 1st.
Right, we used to start on March 1st, and then we prayed that it would get warm by the end of March, that you could start, you know, go outside.
Absolutely.
I, I'd like to make a motion that for sports, we do the second semester plan option with the hope that it will start December 7th, and we will not take the October 7th option. If I want a second? Oh, I know, I know.
Twice between bad and worse, okay.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, Ms. Herbert, how can you get it to?
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to rack this in my head.
As you're racking, Ms. Herbert, my concern is, well, it looks like we're only given them three weeks of competition. If we have a hiccup, wise we're starting out, that could be two weeks.
Yep.
You know, it's just.
I, I, I'm, I'm.
I think we're underserving them, but, but I understand, and I understand the traditional seasons.
I know, that's what I started thinking of.
If they start out, okay, I'm just going to. If they were to start this coming Monday, okay? Like I said, these kids are already playing across county lines, across state lines anyway. This kind of contains it a little bit, might help us a little bit better with our numbers.
That's how, I'm also looking at it too. No, but we already said that we weren't going to start any sports until two weeks after we start school. Correct? That's what we said.
That would be my vote.
That's right. And we got to stick with that first.
That would be my vote, yes.
Even if they start conditioning?
They're already conditioning, so.
So your vote is to start, what you would like to see is?
It's a no-win situation because I, I just worry about fall sports. And they're not going to have. I, I just, I think that daylight savings time is going to kill us.
So can the kids?
Because of, of what we said, and we're going to stick to that and not start, we can't start till two weeks after school starts.
Right, but if they start practice now, then they, then games won't start for another two weeks, correct?
No, but that's not what we said. We said we were not going to do anything with athletes until two weeks after school started.
But they're conditioning now.
They're conditioning now, but that does not count.
Count towards it.
That does not count towards their practice before they comply. That does not count. That's, that's MPSAA rules.
Right.
Yes, conditioning does not count. If you thought that, no, it does not. So they only get three, three football games. And that's not right. And I know hockey player, hockey coaches have said, yes, some of them, they'd like to play in the fall, but then they also want to play for a state championship. The thing that really aggravates me is that I didn't know that there was a possibility of the other to go, because I like to, you know, I like to talk, I like to talk to these coaches myself and get the, get the feel, you know? And I, I don't know what they want now because of this, of the opportunity to be able to do longer seasons. And I, that's why I said that really aggravated me when I found that out because that's just changed the whole thing.
Right, someone explain to me what the difference is between conditioning and practice.
Because they have not issued any football equipment out at all. They cannot do that till the first day of practice in football. That's MPSAA guidelines, so.
It's also voluntary.
Yes, okay.
Whereas when practice starts.
That's it.
You've got the squad.
You've got to be there, yep.
If you want to be on the team, you're going to show up for practice. And technically, they consider making the team, determining who's going to be on the first team, second team, third team, et cetera. Conditioning is optional, doesn't count towards any of that.
So, do you understand that now? Yeah, it doesn't count at all.
It doesn't make any sense.
Nope.
I mean, with COVID and everything, you think there's.
But it is what it is.
Yep, yep, and that's with anything. That's with, in any of these sports, they have to have 21 days of practice in.
Except golf.
Yes.
So, Mr. Kyler, to your point, you were saying, you know, if we have hiccups, right? Like, we're, we're already. Like we're, we're already working frantically to try to get everything else to work for academics, right? To add, to add sports to the equation becomes very difficult. But if we did have hiccups, I'm not sure that it would impact sports. Right? Like it might impact academics, but I'm not sure that it would impact sports unless we had an outbreak on, on the team.
Right.
Depending on, okay.
It, I, I just am so aggravated because we, I didn't know this ahead of time, and I like to talk to people and to think their reasoning out, and, you know, I did, had talked to the football coaches, and I had talked to athletic directors, and what did you think? And, and now they've, they've changed the game on us, and I don't know what they think, and this is not fair. Because they should have, you know, I like to, I, I like to listen to what they have to say and have some, you know, what, as a football coach, do you want to play three, three games? Or do you want to come back and hope that we can get six games in, in between that? And I, I just, I like people, I like coaches' opinions. I've lived in athletics, and this isn't, you know, I, I don't know what they feel now because the game's changed from last week. So now, since we meet again next week...
Mr. Duffy, if, if whoever's starting in, in October, what's the rule on spectators for Maryland?
None.
The current, the current rule allows for half of the capacity of the gymnasium or 100 people, whichever is smaller. And outdoor facilities are half the capacity or 250 people, whichever is smaller. That is the current guideline.
We could change, now, we can make our own guidelines regarding spectators, correct?
I believe we're allowed to make them more restrictive. It's an executive order, I believe it's from the, and if Mr. Singer's still on, I believe it's either executive order from the governor or from the Maryland Department of Health, and I think it's the Maryland Department of Health.
It's, it's a Secretary of Health's order, and it has the same weight as, as the order from the governor.
So if, if I'm not mistaken, we can make it more restrictive, but not less restrictive. Is that correct, Mr. Singer?
Correct, you're, you're limited to that number of spectators.
Which I think we can easily do. We just, it's parents only. They're give, you know, each kid is giving them like two tickets or something, and that's it. It's not going to be this huge homecoming game or, you know, whatever they have regarding later on. Nothing like that. It's going to have to be smaller. Look, if NFL has shortened their season, baseball's shortened their season, basketball's shortened their season, all the major league sports have shortened their seasons. I'm sorry, it's just, all I keep hearing from students is, I don't care if it's three games or two games, just give me a couple games in my field.
Well, let me ask this. So we've, we've already stated that we, we can't jeopardize the academics. We would wait the two weeks to begin the practicing on November 2nd. If we went with the, the October 7th option, but had to delay, right? We would start practicing on November 2nd, and then we would have the, the 20-day rule, and then begin games on November 23rd, I believe it was, right? So if that's, if that's the option, so if we don't have to make that decision tonight, and Marsha, that gives you the time to go talk to people, get the feedback.
Just see when we're meeting again, and that's next Wednesday.
That's what I was going to suggest.
We're, we're meeting next Wednesday, so we're going to push, do everything that we can in order to get the December 7th schedule. You know, put, put our full weight and support behind the December 7th schedule, try to get that approved. But, and, and maybe within the next seven days, we'll know where that stands, and it'll give you time to get additional feedback.
Because, you know, we're talking about students, student athletes, and we're talking about coaches that really vol, they basically volunteer. They're, they're, they're very hardworking individuals and put a lot of time in it. And I just think it's very important to hear from them and to see what, you know, what, what they feel, you know, what, what their opinion is. I value that, so...
So by next week, you will have a feel for that?
Yes, I, you know, and Mr. Duffy, please make phone calls. You know, I, I, I just want to get a feel. I mean, I know you meet with the athletic directors once or twice a week. But, but I, I just want to, I, I want to, I want to, we got to figure out what they want. It's, it's not all about the five of us, it's what those coaches out there want to do. And I just think this is a big game changer. Yeah, it's a big game changer on this, on, on your part. I understand why that second semester thing looks good now, you know? I, I just worry about playing football in, in, in March, but I, I want to, I want to talk to these guys, or these girls. I want to talk to these coaches and see, get, get a feel, because it's, I don't think it's right to, for us to sit here tonight and make a decision, and then tomorrow, we get bombarded. What do you want? Well, I just, I, we need a game film, or we were going to try to work this out. So, you know, and they'll be honest. They'll tell me whether it's going to work or not.
So we do put it out for public comment, and then once we have everything on Wednesday, we vote next Wednesday?
Well, I don't know that we'll have a decision from the Maryland State Department of Education by next Wednesday.
But we will get a feel what these coaches are, are interested in doing. Because I, I, I think that's, that's part of it, and, and I think they should.
Devonte, is there a way to survey the students that are involved in fall sports?
I think we could do it very similarly to how we surveyed the students last time, by sending out a forms link to our students. And I can also like try and get in touch with many student athletes across the county. But to just make it, make sure that we get everyone's opinions, I think sending out like a survey like we did with the school reopening would be a good idea.
I think we need a survey, just public comment, just like we normally do, like this is out for public comment, please email the board. I mean, we've gotten hundreds already this week, so why not a hundred more?
I just want to do it right, you know?
First, you wait until next week, you lose another week.
No, no...
No, because we can't, we've already made a decision that we weren't going to start until the 19th, I mean, school starts. And we've already, we, as a group, decided that we were not going to start sports for two weeks after school started. So that was, that was, we've all already agreed on that.
If we get public comment, we come back next Wednesday, it's on the agenda, and we set the date then.
Everyone okay with that?
I mean, and that's the thing, if we, if we, you know, hear next week that people want fall sports, I'm, I'm sure coaches are ready to go. I know the kids are ready to go, but I, I mean, let's just put it out for a week and see what we get.
And so to the community, to make sure that they understand what we're asking, though, in terms of community input, is, is what would the fall season look like, right? Would you rather have, would you rather have just, you know, two to three games on, on fall?
Start now and have fewer games?
Or have the condensed season for all, for all three, starting later and starting...
The two semester plan.
The, right. The already approved two semester plan.
Then I will feel much more comfortable making a vote, because that's, I, I just, I wouldn't vote tonight.
Okay, because, Dr. Lockard, are we understanding that properly? That if we wait until next week, it's not impacting...
They can't start.
Because we already said that we're not, we wouldn't start practice until November 2nd. Just want to make sure we're not missing a logistic there that...
Unless, Michael, you have one that...
I, I can say I, I don't, the only thing I can say is that the, you know, the more we delay, and I appreciate getting more information, it does cut down on the time until we're able to start something, if we choose to start something. And the one concern I would throw into potentially a three-week season is something that both, both Mr. Booze and Mr. Malloy mentioned last week. There is a very realistic chance of teams losing out on competitions due to outbreaks. So we could wind up with teams getting one game or zero games. That, that is, the fewer games we make available, the fewer play dates we have available, the less wiggle room we have to move things. So I just want to make sure that, that is part of, that's part of the calculus that is going into all decision-making. That's all. We're, we're willing to work with whatever is needed, we will make it work. We have an outstanding crew, and we'll, we'll make it happen. I just want to make sure you have the most complete information to make your decisions.
I appreciate Mr. Duffy, I really do. It's just, I know there were several emails from what I saw. You know, they appreciated me and Ms. Herbert bringing up last week regarding how kids are in the rec programs, and they're like, what is going on? Like, why aren't we doing something in the county? And I, and I know, again, COVID is just messing everything up. But, yeah, I, I, I have, when it comes to seniors and their last opportunities to memories, and we had a lot lose their memories last year, you know, they, they lost out a lot, and I, I don't want to keep going down that road again. And I know it's hard, but like I said, if we got kids playing rec across all over the state, we need to figure something out.
All right, so we have consensus then. We'll, we'll wait until next week so we can gather some more feedback. And we will put all of our weight and support behind the December 7th, if, if we can have any influence on that.
And we have to make a decision that day.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, I, I, I hesitate to ask, but any other new or unfinished business?
Well, I just had, just again, going back to the hybrid model, just a couple questions. So we talked about in the last meeting, like the potential staffing solutions. So how, what like had, way have we made with that, like especially for the teachers who will be teaching all virtual? So will there be an instructional assistant in each class or in most of the classes? Or is that not a possibility currently as staffing goes?
Great question, Devonte. Cindy, do you want to, you and the directors maybe speak to that? And it's going to be a little, little different depending on the school and the situation.
Yes, so we're working with the principals at each school to staff each school. And so in some cases, we have teachers who will be teaching virtually. And in that situation, we are trying to use either instructional assistants or substitutes to be in those classrooms while the teacher teaches virtually. We have situations where teachers are going to be out on leave altogether, and they're not going to be teaching at all. And in those cases, we're trying to find certified substitutes to, to take over those classrooms. And so we are, we are trying to increase our substitute pool. And we have made a lot of progress since last Wednesday in filling vacancies. And we're going to continue that work up until the 19th. So, so yes, that's what we've been working on.
If I could chime in, I know you love me, you said you made a lot of progress. What does that actually mean? You have like 288 teachers who have said that they're not, or asking for leave or whatever it is, I think about 288. Also, one thing, you have to remember, life goes on with that, with COVID as well. So teachers are going to be out for pregnancies, teachers are going to be out for other sicknesses, teachers are going to be out for surgeries, family things. So all that has to come into effect. So I believe last week, you said you had like 40 substitutes additionally. What is the number right now to cover the 288 that we're looking at right now?
Hello, Commissioner Frazier. We have 70 acquired, 70 permanent subs. We have opened up the pool for our daily subs as well to accommodate those normal needs that we have in regards to covering teachers that are expecting normal daily illnesses. So we have expanded our substitute pool. We are in partnership with the Department of Labor, acquiring to see if we can acquire additional staff from recent other staffing changes with other systems. So we are aggressively working to attract more subs, and we are doing, expanded our search in regards to be able to adequately staff come October the 19th.
So just on October 19th, do we expect to have a couple classes where the teacher won't be there? And if so, then what's the, the course of action for those students in that class?
Are you asking if, if there's, if the teacher is teaching virtually from home?
If there's a teacher on leave and they're not able to find a substitute.
Well, we are, we're working to fill all of those at this time. Shantress?
Yeah, I was going to say exactly that. We have every anticipation that we will be able to staff that classroom with either a teacher teaching physically, virtually, or some type of substitute, whether it's an instructional assistant within that classroom so that instruction can continue.
It's good to know, thank you.
Board members, any other new or unfinished business? Okay, just want to take that one last moment to say thank you to everyone for the tremendous amount of effort and work that's, that's going into this. I think we're living Dr. Lockard's motto of together it's possible. So we appreciate everyone's dedication and hard work, and excited to take the, the next step forward. And I guess that's it. With that, I will say that we have our next meeting at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. It's the regularly scheduled board meeting with citizen participation, anticipated at 5:00 PM and 6:30 PM here in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. And we look forward to seeing you all next week. All right, thanks, everyone, and have a good night. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Herbert, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.